Good evening, welcome to the April Board Meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District. I'm Rick Mason, President of the Board. Our mission statement, our new mission statement by the way, is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we rise and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Here.
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 Verification meeting notice?
Yes, it was in the paper and on the website.
Any agenda revisions?
I do not have any.
I'll take approval. Motion?
Move approval of the agendas printed.
Second. Move to approve the agenda in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Community input?
I have Mrs. Morris who signed up to speak.
Right.
Mrs. Gregor said she wouldn't sing tonight, so Mrs. Morris.
Alright.
Hi, thanks.
Hi.
This is a statement on the behalf of the Lake Mills Education Association. First off, we wanted to congratulate Rachel Davies and Donna Thomas for their recent election to the school board. But our main topic tonight is the issue of student debt. We realize that this has become a growing problem, and particularly among educators, it can make it difficult for them to stay in the profession. So to this end, the Lake Mills Education Association and Lake Mills Education Support Professional Association have been working with some members of WIEC for ways to find relief for our educators so that we can actually keep them in the profession and help them to prosper in this profession. And so, we'd like to invite educators from Jefferson County, whether it's your own debt or your child's debt that you're worried about, to explore some options to find relief to this problem. We'll have representatives from Summit Credit Union there to take input and to work on some of these solutions, which are informed as yet. But our meeting is on May 13th, 5:00 PM, in the Elementary School Art Room. And again, it's open for educators from Jefferson County, and we'll be publicizing this through individual school districts as well, and there will be food provided. So we hope to have a lot of people there and to try to find some constructive solutions to the problem that we're facing. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Consent agenda. Minutes of March 4th, special meeting executive session, and March 9th, regular meeting and executive session.
Move approval of the minutes of the March 4th, 2015 special meeting and executive session, and a March 9th, 2015 regular meeting and executive session.
Second.
Move in second to approve the March 4th meeting and March 9th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Vouchers and invoices in the treasurer's report.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in amount of $1,647,444.11 for the month of March and the treasurer's report for March 2015.
Second.
Move in second to approve vouchers and invoices and the treasurer's report. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Reports, administrative reports. Ms. Nicholson.
Good evening. Just to talk about some things, we're already in the throes of preparing for next year. We're reviewing what we do for student activities during the school year between, sorry, did this go out? Can you still hear me?
No.
Okay, okay, thanks. So we talked about, we're talking about student activities that we do through the year, like what field trips do we take, are there any gaps, and how we're gonna fill those gaps. Tonight, we had a meeting about report card comments and how we're using those to communicate with parents. We had a meeting to determine what our professional development as a staff look like for next year, and we're continuing our scheduling committee. Our jump ropes for heart, in terms of student activities, raised over $2,000. And then we had our final dance of the year where the fifth graders get to come. We had 100 extra kids at the dance on Friday, and it was a great time. Student council provided us with like 150 balloons and 20 beach balls. If you've been a principal, you know how exciting that can be. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's strike it.
Tonight, we'd like to take a new opportunity to honor our students who are part of the youth apprenticeship program. It's a growing program, it's really exciting. And so here tonight are Cindy Sandberg, Rich Dykstra, and Jen Iverson to talk about the students and the programs and all the things that were accomplished this year.
Thank you for having us. This year, the youth apprenticeship program, we registered 127 students within the county, and your district had over 20, probably close to 30 kids registered, which is just tremendous for the size of your district that it is. Part of youth apprenticeship, besides having this opportunity, your district also had another opportunity because of this, and that was our Fast Forward Construction Grant. And because of that, Mark Phillips was trained in NCCER, which is National Center for Construction Educational Research in the Corps, and your students in your construction program now are having the ability to receive a certificate in NCCER Corps, which is almost like a gold card into the construction industry. So, and besides that, you also received rigging kits worth $150, I think you received 10 of them, so that was a $1,500 donation from 3M this year. So sometimes, besides being in youth apprenticeship, we have these spinoffs that go along with this grant. So I just wanted to let you know that that is one exciting thing. Another exciting thing that's happening with youth apprenticeship is we are finally starting to take and have the discussions between youth apprenticeship to registered adult apprenticeship. And there are bridges that are being happening. So the students that are in youth apprenticeship, their hours may in the future count towards registered apprenticeship, specifically in manufacturing and in the construction trades. So this is kind of exciting too, as we continue to grow the program. So tonight, I'd like to honor the seniors that are here with their parents and their employers, and the various ones that were graduating from the program now. So our first one, so I'd like to also recognize Rich Dykstra, who was for the Ag, Jennifer, where's Jennifer? Jennifer Iverson, who does our finance and our IT, and then Mark Phillips, who does our manufacturing and our construction. So, Rich? And Jennifer? So our first student we'd like to honor tonight is Emily Graves. She was on the Zimmerman Farm, and Byron Zimmerman was her mentor.
She's not here.
Okay. Okay, some of these are milking. Our next one is Davis Kennard. He was at the Bruce Strauss Farm, and Bruce Strauss was his mentor.
He's not.
Okay. Alright. Okay. Next one, Owen Malco. And this is kinda nice too. The students, sometimes they're, besides being apprenticeship, there are other activities, and that's great. Next one is Owen Malco. He was at Strausdale Holsteins with Bruce Strauss as his mentor. Okay. Construction, Ryan Family, Rudy Electric with John Adsett. Is John here too? Is your employer here?
Yeah.
Oh, well, John, come on up. This is wonderful to have. Ryan is actually in a pre-apprenticeship program here, going into registered apprenticeship probably in his future, in the electrical area, so this is wonderful. Next one is Kyle Hafferman. He was at Jimmy Johns, and his employer was Ben Jamison. Next one we have is, we have two students here at Timber Creek, which was Ron Mauer. We have Sheri Kasubi and Abigail Wild. We had Courtney Topoltesh was at Ford Healthcare Nutrition Services, and her mentor was Ellen Burnett, and I think she's at work tonight.
Yeah, she's at a baseball game.
Oh, she's at a baseball game, okay. Nathan Zastro was at the McDonald's here, and Amber Poysel was their mentor. Two more that we have here that are not here tonight, they are working. Beau Baling was at Salines Diamond Precision Products in Manufacturing with Kevin Wild, and Eddie Hackt was at Chapter 2 Incorporated with Chris Burrows. Eddie is a kind of a nice way that youth apprenticeship spins off also. Eddie is in your middle college program, and Eddie went to work at Chapter 2 over the summer as an intern, and they liked him so much, they kept him on as a youth apprenticeship student during the school year. So for Eddie, this has been a wonderful opportunity that we were able to marry the two programs together, and that's another factor of youth apprenticeship. So again, we thank you for being, allowing us to be here and recognizing our students, and who do we have? Oh, I'm sorry, I must missed one. I'm sorry, I skipped right over. Alicia Haiki at Greenwood State Bag, Connie Rolene, her is the mentor. I apologize, skipped right over. And she, she was in the area of finance. So it's kinda nice, you did areas in Ag, construction, finance, hospitality, lodging, and tourism, and manufacturing, production tech are the students you had. Oh, and Sue Havland, yes, was our instructor for doing hospitality. I'll get them all. Thank you very much. In the past, there was a countywide presentation of all of these awards, so it was really
nice to bring it locally tonight. Okay, some other things going on at the high school. At our April staff development, we finished up our work with Dr. Tony Frontier about meaningful feedback to students. It's grading, but we know that feedback is what's most important to kids, so we're taking it from the standpoint of feedback, and our staff has been doing a lot of professional reading and creating some new tools to enhance grading practices, and we'll continue that into next year, because we know that meaningful feedback is one of the most important factors in student achievement. Our ACT results are back from when all of our juniors took their tests, except for those students with special accommodations, those aren't here yet, and so I'll be sharing those numbers with you as soon as we have them. And that was our school learning objective this year, was based around the results of that test, so we're all anxiously awaiting those scores. And if any parents had not, have not received those scores from ACT directly, I need for them to get in contact with our office. Continuing on testing, on April 28th and 29th is our next round of testing, and all freshmen and sophomores will be taking the ACT Aspire. Remember, the freshmen took that in the fall, and now freshmen and sophomores are taking that again in April. And on those two days, juniors and seniors will have a late start again. Before the next school board meeting, we will be having our students, or our senior portfolio exit interviews. As you know, this is the big culmination event after four years. Students are working on their portfolios, they've been turned in, they've been reviewed now, by tomorrow, they'll be reviewed by our staff reviewers, and then they'll be going out to the community reviewers next week. And the show choir and senior music trip was a great success. If you want to see pictures of that, you can go to the Music Parents Fan page, or Facebook page, there's lots and lots of great pictures, you can see all the exciting things that they did, and, and as I've been talking to the kids, they just had a fantastic time. It's a whirlwind trip, it's fast, and they were pretty exhausted by the time they came back. And speaking of traveling, our groups that are getting ready to go to Costa Rica, and then the other group that are getting, that's getting ready to go to France, they are continuing their fundraising and actually studying a lot about the culture in preparation for staying in homes on each of those trips. So there's a lot of traveling kinds of things going on right now. Finally, I want to thank all the families that took time to fill out the survey about my job performance, and I just want everyone to know that I appreciate the time that it took to fill out that survey, and that I do take every comment seriously, and we'll weave that into my plans for doing a better job next year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sidrout.
Good evening. First, I'd like to mention that during the April end service, we had 53 staff members trained in nonviolent, I always have to say it, nonviolent crisis intervention training, so that we stay within our guidelines of students in need of intervention. And today, we started the Badger Exam and opened across the state for the first time. And so our middle school students got to start that today. We are starting with our middle school students for these two weeks, we're gonna try to get that all wrapped up, and then Pam is going to be doing the ACT Aspire testing, and then we're gonna do the elementary students through the Badger Exam. So we're staggering it, because it's a lot of taxing on our internet capabilities and our technology system. So Chris and Brad have been working really hard to make sure that it's successful, and today was a good day for testing for our students, a good thing. In front of you tonight, I put a template for a sample scope and sequence, and next month, you are going to have some presentations on some curriculum work that we've been doing this year. The English, world languages, and music departments have been working on their scope and sequence, K through 12, and they will be presenting what they have come up with their scope and sequence. I gave you this template because this year, it looks a little bit different. We've come up with a different design for curriculum scope and sequence. And what they're working on, per course, about six to eight units will be taught. And what they need to come up with for each of those units is a unit goal, enduring understandings for the unit, and then essential questions that the students can answer. This is following the framework of Grant, Wiggins, and Jay McTie with the Understanding by Design format that we follow for curriculum development. They're also working on a curriculum map that includes what standards they're reaching, and a couple other things, like the skills and knowledge that students will need in order to complete the units. So there's two parts of the curriculum scope and sequence, and then they are also picking out materials that need to be purchased in order to meet the scope and sequence. So I just wanted to give you a preview of what you're gonna hear next month, as the three departments present their curriculum scope and sequence. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. Last week, Friday, at our Good Character Assembly, our kindergarten staff and students presented a video about self-control for all of our students, and that video is up on our website. Additionally, our school was awarded, our school rocks, a $1,000 check, and Mr. Sanders was able to accept that on behalf of our school, and will be in conversations about how we'll be using those funds for our students in the future. Jump rope and hoops for heart was also recognized at our assembly. Mr. Anan was a human Sunday. Students were able to pile on the toppings on top of him. Our students raised over $9,000 for this organization, so we're very proud of them and their efforts. Last week, I attended the Title I Conference as a Title I Coordinator, and was able to learn about the state's new process for submitting monitoring documents utilizing Google Docs, so now it's all electronic, instead of using the binders that DPI used to come in to look at, we'll be able to electronically upload those documents in the future. Coming up, we have our talent show, April 23rd. Our Spirit Squad will be putting that together for all of us. Mr. Kiefer will be hosting our art show on April 30th, if you could come out, and it will be all throughout the school, with every student having at least one piece of artwork being showcased. Our volunteer recognition celebration will be at our Good Character Assembly on May 15th. And finally, our school will be participating in the statewide tornado drill on Thursday afternoon. Any questions?
Can you just explain what that $1,000 is for? A little bit more?
Sure. The, the award itself was given to our school as part of the new building design, specific to our carpeting actually, and the design process that went into the entire school design. And so the $1,000, we're going to, as a school, be in conversations about what should we do with this money. Some thoughts are to provide some benching outside, once we have the grass growing in the back area, to put some benches back there and create a bit of a walking path further out on the school playground. So that's one idea, but I'm sure there's many others.
And who is it from again?
Pet Craft, I believe, is the name of the company.
Pet Core.
Pet Core, thank you.
The manufacturer and the architect entered the building in a national contest. There were 125 schools nationally that were entered. Five schools were recognized for their innovative use of, you know, flooring, because that's what it was, but, you know, for the use of the carpet so it's quieter, and things like that. And we were one of the top five in the nation.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chady.
Well, good evening. I've got four items to chat with you about here this evening, but in reference to the audit report, we do have a guest speaker from Hawkins Ash. Monica Hauser is here, so I'll defer to her first, and I'll address the other three items when she's completed.
Hello, everyone. I'm Monica Hauser from Hawkins Ash CPAs. I'm gonna go through and just do a quick summary of the financial statements and the audit. We handed out a sheet in front of you, it's three pages long, just a comparative statement, it makes it a little bit easier for you to follow and see some of the variances as I'm talking through them. So first off, we do two different types of audits. We do a financial audit, and we do a compliance, or a single, we call it a single audit. It's an audit of your federal award money, or your grants, and we have to do that in accordance with circular A133. So on the financial piece of the audit, you'll see the thicker book, the financial statements. The opinion is on pages three to five, and I'll just summarize it, 'cause I know it's pretty wordy. The most important thing is on page four, under the opinion paragraph, and basically it says that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So that's a unmodified opinion, or the best opinion you can get on the financial statements. Then, we'll go through the comparative statements versus flipping through the whole book. It might be a little bit easier for you to understand in a short time period what's going on. So you can see the comparative balance sheet, it's on, and this is summarizing page eight of the financial statements. So cash and investments is 5.8 million compared to 21 million in 2013, so a decrease of 15 million. And this is due to, we borrowed at the end of 2013 for your elementary school project, and so a lot of those funds were spent down during 2014. Due from other governments, increased 374,000, and this is just due to timing of when grant claim forms are filled out and sent in. So this year, at the end of 2014, there was more claims that hadn't been submitted yet, and the cash hadn't been received yet. So overall, your total assets were 9 million compared to 24 million last year, so a decrease of 14.9 million. Liabilities and fund balance, you can see the short-term note payable decreased about 105,000, so that's good, that's our line of credit that we're borrowing on. Accounts payable decreased 208,000, and a lot of this is due to the timing of when the construction invoices were coming in, and this is a snapshot as of June 30th. So in 2013, there was more construction invoices than there was in 2014. Things were really getting wrapped up at the end of 14. Overall, our total liabilities, 2.1 million at the end of 2014, 2.5 million at the end of 13, a decrease of 371,000. For fund balance, the restricted fund balance, that's a combination of your debt service fund, your capital projects, community service, your trust fund or Fund 21, and your food service fund. So that's all the equity or fund balance you have in those funds. And then the unassigned, that's for your general fund. You can see that your overall restricted equity decreased about 14.8 million, and a lot of that was due to the capital projects. So same thing, we spent down the cash, decreased our equity. So those capital projects are getting down to a little bit of nothing left at the end of 14. Then the unassigned fund balance, that increased 7.8% or 294,000. And we like to compare your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenses. So this year was 29.1%, and that's very good. Last year was 26%. So we say anywhere from 25 to 35%. We like to see if you have enough fund balance, you're not having a short-term borrow, which you're building your fund balance up, and you can see your short-term notes payable are coming down. So as you build up your fund balance, you should have to borrow less on your line of credit. Then the next page, this is the summary of the Statement of Revenue, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. You can see that for revenue, the major change was in state sources. There was an increase of 902,000, and this was mostly due to an increase in your equalization aid from the state in 2014. So total revenue was 18 million at the end of 2014, 17 million for 2013, or an increase of 964,000 or 6%. And then under expenditures, and I'm just talking about the, I picked out the major changes here. Special education was, had increased about 15% or 213,000. And a lot of this was just due to some, we had to have some changes in staffing, increased some staffing to meet the student needs. Under support services, there was an increase in pupil services, so increased about 143,000 or 32%. And we had, we hired a new elementary school guidance counselor in 2014, and then we increased the OTPT position from .4 to .6. For operations and maintenance, there was a large increase, 3.7 million or 197%. And this is all due to the construction project. So there's a lot of little things in there that don't get capitalized and depreciated, and so they go through this operations and maintenance expense account. And then debt service, interest increased 321,000, and this was due to issuing some new debt in 2013, so we had to start making interest payments in 14. And then the other, there was a decrease. Last year, we issued debt, and so there was some debt issue costs which go in this other line. So that was about 150,000 last year. And then capital outlay. This year was 11 million, last year was 2 million, so an increase of 8 million, 8.8 million, and this is for the elementary school construction project. And then the last two items, proceeds from long-term debt borrowing, those, that was in 2013, that was the bonds that we issued for the construction project, and then the premium on the debt financing, again, that's on that same bond from last year. So that's, the financial statements kind of is a snapshot, I wasn't gonna go through the footnotes, there was nothing really new in there. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at them and had questions in the specific footnote, or financial statements. I'll do a quick summary on the single audit, or the federal audit piece. You can see the summary of the federal awards on pages 38 and 39, and you don't have to look at it right now, but it schedules out all of the grants that you're getting, so it's kind of important. In 2014, you received 743,000 in federal awards. Your state awards are on page 40 and 41. And then on page 46, I will have you flip there if you can, this is our summary, basically our single audit summary. It tells the major programs we tested, any findings we came across. It's called the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost. You can see we tested two federal programs this year, the IDEA grant, or the IDEA cluster, and then we had to test Medicaid. So based on the size of the grants, and how much, how many federal awards you receive during the year, we have to rotate what grants we test and get a certain percentage of coverage to meet the audit guidelines. If you flip over to page 47, you can see for state, we tested special ed and general equalization aids, which we have to test every year, and then per pupil aid was also tested in 2014. And then the last piece I'm gonna go through is the financial statement findings. And please feel free to stop and ask questions if you have any. So the first one was segregation of duties. So this was new, and some of the issues were changeover of staff during the year, so there were some issues with getting proper checks and balances in place. So you can read through that comment. I'll just give the brief summary of them. Preparation of financial statements, this is, we have to evaluate whether or not we believe the district could prepare their own financial statements. We did not think the district could at this time, so we have this finding in there, 'cause we, technically, we as auditors should not be preparing the financial statements and auditions. So we have this finding in there because we, technically, we as auditors should not be preparing the financial statements and auditing them. So that's why we're required to put this finding in there if the district can't do it themselves. Material audit adjustments or audit journal entries. So we had to make a significant amount of journal entries this year for the audit. And you'll see those in the management letter in a couple of minutes. And a lot of this was just changeover in staff, learning, you know, a little bit of training, making sure everybody's getting done what they need to get done. Number four was the late submission of the annual report. So the annual report is due on September 19th. It was filed late, therefore we have to issue a finding because DPI looks at these audits as well. Number five is late submission of the special ed report. Same thing, due September 19th, was submitted on October 1st. So again, since it was late, we have to issue the finding. Number six, publishing budget amendments. So we just have to make sure that if the board approves a budget amendment, that it gets published. And then we as auditors need to see proof of that publishing. So those were the audit, the financial statement findings that we had. We'll go through the little book. That's our independent auditor's report on communication with those charged with governance and management advisory comments. So on page two, this is required communication to the board. Basically, we have to disclose if we had any significant issues during the audit, that sort of thing. You can see in the middle of page two that there was no new accounting policies adopted during 2014. We have to disclose any estimates in the financial statement. And these are the same as last year, depreciation because we're estimating the lives of the assets. And then your OPEB or your other post-employment benefits because that's based on an actuarial study. So we consider that an estimate. Then on page three, we're required to disclose any audit journal entries that we have to make. And so those are on pages five through 16. And I'm not going to go through them individually, but then we can flip to page 18. These are just our general overall advisory comments, suggestions for improvement type of things. First thing is the uniform grant guidance. So the federal government changed the rules on grants going forward. And they're also changing the requirements for a single audit. So for fiscal year June 30th, 2016, you won't be required to have a single audit if you have under 750,000 of federal awards. So you guys are right on the border right now. So you could potentially drop off and not have to have a federal single audit. Then the next comment is on page 19. This is our GASB statement number 68 or the general, or the governmental accounting standards board. And this is new reporting for pensions. So this one goes into effect for June 30, 2015. What's going to happen is WRS is going to come out with whatever Lake Mills School District's portion of their whole liability, which is probably going to be pretty small considering there's a lot of other bigger districts and municipalities in the state. So if it's 0.1% of the whole WRS, then Lake Mills School District is going to report that 0.1% as a liability on whatever's unfunded in the WRS system. We'll have to report that on their books. So I have no idea what the numbers will end up being. I've been told it won't be very significant because the WRS is a pretty well-funded plan. So compared to a lot of other state plans, I don't think it'll be real significant for the Wisconsin schools and municipalities. The next item is special education, no valid license. We noted that there was one para-professional aid that did not have a valid license. This had to be reported to DPI. So we just said, make sure you're looking at that and someone needs to track the licensure and make sure that everybody that's getting coded there has proper licenses. The next item is grant claims and coding. So we noted that a lot of the grants, the claim forms were just being done at year end. And we would suggest for good cash management, try to do those quarterly or a little bit more frequently, especially on those large grants, just so you're not, you've already spent the money, you want to get it back from the state. So you got to do those claim forms in order to get reimbursed. Fund 73 requirements, there was one issue that the, we need to notify people how the trust agreement can be obtained. So this is something that could be sent out via email or put in a pay stub or something like that. It's a pretty easy fix. And then the next item, student activity funds. We just noted a lot of different accounts that did not have any activity within the fiscal year. So we just said, let's maybe think about creating a policy for inactive accounts so that there's not money sitting out there, nobody's paying attention to it, that sort of thing. Food service à la carte receding. So we noted that cash is being received in the line for à la carte. Obviously, cash is something that's very easily stolen. So we just recommend that a procedure be put into place that, you know, if they use cards or some other things so that the cash cannot be mishandled. Just a way to be able to track how much cash is, if we're going to collect cash, how much is being collected. And then the last one is the fund 80 expenditures. So this is something DPI is kind of focused on in the last couple of years is your community service fund. So we had to select a sample of expenditures and test those. And we noted that there was three of them where approval of the dispersment was missing. So just something to make sure that we have a good procedure in place for those expenditures. I don't have anything else, does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions? Monica, one of the things you said was the fund balance. And it should be 25 to what?
To 35. Obviously.
That's your recommendation?
A soft recommendation? There's no hard, like.
I know.
Concrete thing out there, but you know, you have to be cautious. You don't want to have it too low, you don't have any cash.
Right, right.
But you don't want to get too high because then the citizens are saying, hey, what are you doing with my money? You're just sitting on it.
What is our percentage now?
29.1. So I'd say you're right, pretty good ballpark.
Good, good. So after all of this stuff you gave us here, what's the takeaway for the average person on the street? What's the financial condition of Lake Mills area school district?
I guess I'd say it's pretty good. Fund balance is probably one of the top things we look at. Now, one of the things is we're still in a short-term borrowing position. So you know, eventually if we can work our way out of that so we're not having to pay interest on short-term borrowing, we can, we have enough cash to be able to pay our expenses throughout the year. So I guess I'd say it's pretty good at this point. So you're going the right way, you're increasing the fund balance slightly. We're not seeing big dips in it.
Did you get that, Dennis? Repeat on that? All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Just real quickly, a couple of other items. As you may recall, you approved the refinancing of the 2009 middle school debt. That closed just before the Thursday before spring break here in late March. And Dennis, you ready? Just a toss out to you. Interest savings on the refinancing of that, just over $260,000. So kind of some relief to the taxpayers in the future years with regards to, yeah, 13 years, the amount of interest savings averages, then approximately $20,000 a year. So also been working on a bid process for our property insurance. Some of you may be aware that with the governor's budget proposal, the local government property insurance fund is due to be ceased over the next couple of years because of some uncertainties with that and the potential impact in the marketplace. We're going out to bid with our property insurances currently. And we'll see how that comes back. We did go through this process about a year ago. At that point in time, the local government property insurance fund was more cost-effective for the district. So in all likelihood, our expenses related to property insurance will end up going up. And last item is our membership audit is scheduled for Thursday and Friday. Lake Mills was one of the 25% randomly selected for a membership audit here this year, although it's been a good number of years, I think four or five years since the last district's membership audit. So that'll be undertaken on Thursday and Friday. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sanders, you're up.
In my report tonight, I'm going to start with two, I guess, reports from the outside, from the community to the district. One on the Highway 89 bike trail, which has been here before, but is back to be talked about again. And then a farm-to-school proposal to start working on using some of the land that we have that sits idle toward some use by the school, farming to school. And so I'm going to let John Hegedorn take both of those. And John, you can introduce your people that you have with you. And you can just take questions on one and go right into the other one. How's that sound? All right. I don't know if he was listening to me.
We've got a few exhibits, we're only on seven.
Just make sure they all get them. We'll get one.
This is the wrong one.
All righty.
We'll share, make sure they all get one. Just hang onto it as you're doing it.
I can't get my glasses out.
I don't know if that'll handle it. I think you just talk off the sheet, you're fine, Mark.
Like Dean said, I've been here before. Last year, we fell a little bit short of the, of getting everything we needed to get for the rec trails grant through the DNR. But it wasn't a big deal because, you know, there's always next year. However, the rec trails grant and Noel stewardship grant have been earmarked in the governor's budget. So this could possibly be the last year where we could seize these funds, these matching funds for this safe route to school here. So the exhibit in front of you is the same trail we proposed last year, spurring off of the Glacial Drumlin Trail. And coming down to Highway 89, ultimately connecting onto unsaven road. It's about 1,500 feet, 12-foot wide biking and walking trail, consistent with the Glacial Drumlin Trail, crushed limestone. Far enough away from Highway 89, so we're out of DOT right away. And there are, you can see on the exhibit, there's about 35-foot easement that we're requesting from you guys to sign over in perpetuity to the city to have this, to make this bike trail happen. There's a little hiccup right where the billboards are. You can see the easement kind of bumps out a little bit to about 50 to 60 feet. Still doable, but when you're constructing and designing bike trails, they're kind of strict with the regulations in terms of curvature and you can't, you, there's going to be some, a little bit of a loop if we are to take this path and the billboards were to remain there. But Nick and I are here on behalf of Lake Mills Bike Ped and St. Paul Church, we're both members. He's got children that go there. And there's absolutely no way to get there other than vehicle. You can't really walk there, you can't bike there. So this would serve as an important resource and amenity to the community of Lake Mills, providing access off the Glacial Drumlin Trail to get to St. Paul Church and school. Also, the importance of lakeside Lutheran athletics, cross-country soccer, track and field. They're currently running up and down Highway 89. So this would provide a safe, safe route from the Glacial Drumlin Trail to get to the ball fields. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more about that, you're a little bit more familiar with the athletic.
Well, just that, that and any future development, obviously, that the Lake Mills School District.
Right.
implements in that area as well.
Yeah. Yeah, they were talking about this, if this were to actually happen. They have different phases of possible soccer, kickball, baseball fields to be constructed. Potentially some sort of auditorium in this vicinity, in this area, so.
Would that be for the high school or for the elementary or St. Paul's school?
Elementary.
The auditorium? Who's auditor?
Not an auditorium, that's a, no. Yes. So the basic idea, obviously, is that it's going to, it's providing that access for the various sports programs, the various youth and whatnot to be able to access that part of the city or the town. Current, current projected use, obviously, are students going to and from school. It's for the local track and cross-country teams. And as Marty referenced, the lakeside soccer team and a few of the other teams go out and use those fields out there for their current sports complex. That's, that's the basic idea there. Long-term, I think what Marty's alluding to, obviously, is any future development that, with soccer fields, baseball fields, again, it wouldn't be an auditorium, but there might be, again, a small kind of youth gathering complex in that area. Just basically providing safe, safe access for, for the area youth.
So we're here again. This application, I've been in close communication with the person who analyzes the applications and ranks them. She has, she's worked step-by-step with me last year. I've been working really closely with the city. Strand Associates went out and surveyed the area with Dean's permission and got us the locates that we need for the application. There's a May 1st deadline for the application. However, an easement, awarding that is something you guys need to discuss and deliberate and agree upon. There's a, we've been granted an exemption, sort of, since the next school board meeting wouldn't be until after the deadline of May 1st. So that's, you know, that's for you guys to determine. That's not going to delay or, or work against us in obtaining this grant. But the project is about $55,000. The DNR would cover half of that. And the church has already committed the remaining amount of money for this trail. Nick and I have been fundraising in the community and along with the Jefferson County Bicycle Club as well to sort of alleviate some of the burden of cost from the church. But we're hoping that you guys will consider this and discuss it and decide via vote, maybe next board, board meeting.
Two things that I'd like to just add to it, Marty and I have talked about this. One, it says you take the billboards out there. The one is a wooden billboard. If you've driven by out there lately, it's the one that was, used to be a business in town and now it's been blackened over. The company that kind of leased that from us is no longer in the area, is no longer paying the lease. It is, like I said, a wooden billboard, which they do not let you build out of anymore. I went out there yesterday and walked around out there just to look at it and what shape it's in. And it's not in very good shape. I'm expecting that there won't be a wind someday that takes her down. The DOT once told me that when we were discussing that billboard, that if that billboard touches the ground, it's gone. And you will not be able to put another one up there just because of regulations. I would rather that instead of it touching the ground, we put it on the ground and move away. That's just a side note. If any of you have been out and looked at it, two of the major posts in that, in that billboard are rotten. And I'm afraid if we do something like this, who's to say it doesn't come down? And I'm afraid if we do something like this, who's to say it doesn't come down? But that's just a side note. And the one that I, Marty and I have talked about all the way through this thing is, our use of that land out there is unknown at this time. And so if we were to never build on it, and it would go back to the original owners, does the trail then impede our giving that land back? Or will it not because it's a great trail and it might spur the development out there? So those are the things you have to kick around from my standpoint. A, the billboard, I'd like to just take it down. There is electricity to it. It needs to be unhooked, which only takes a letter to the city. But we weren't making any money off of it. We haven't been paid for two years on it. And like I said, I see that one as being a harm. But the other side of that question I know is the, our use of that land and do you want to give that easement to this trail?
Okay, so if that billboard were knocked down?
It wouldn't change the direction of that trail much.
Right.
Why is it out like that anyway? Why is the hiccup, as you refer?
There's still the metal billboard that we can't really fit in between.
Yeah. The two billboards sit side by side.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have to hiccup around them.
If I were designing the trail, I would just wheel us right in between that thing or knock it down, but we can't. We've got to go around it.
So if we, as I understand it, part of that land is, if it's not used for school purposes, reverts back to the previous owner?
Yeah, I don't know which part of it. Some of it we bought, some of it was given, some was donated.
That's my question is, if we, if we decide it's on future time to sell it, that we don't need it for whatever reason, what happens to the bike trail? What's the liability on that?
We eased it. We gave an easement already, so we can't change that.
The bike trail would stay because of the easement that you gave. The person getting it back would have to take it with the easement.
With the easement, okay.
So that's question number one to me, is what does that do to the value of our property out there that we do own if we have an easement on it?
Depends on who's looking to buy it, I would suspect.
Yeah. We all have different opinions about easements.
Right.
I mean, if you were looking at a potential of a future residential development, the value might actually increase.
On our property, you mean, selling our property for that? The other thing that kind of concerns me is that it covers almost our entire property, so it limits our entrance to the property because we don't have any roads on the other side or anything where we have easy access to that property. Our major access is right from that highway.
Well, and that's the only one we're going to have, is off Unsavven. We wouldn't get a second road out there. And that was explained to me by Strand Engineering, that the other road that might come into that property down it would be Unsavven going over to Meyer and then back to CP Avenue would be the other way, but you're not going to get a second entrance off of 89.
No, so in essence, that's kind of what I'm seeing. It limits our access to the property.
I think he's saying you're not, even without the bike trail, they're not, the state isn't going to allow.
Right. So that's what I say. I mean, we're limited anyway, but this could limit us more even.
Not the way it was explained to us. Because Unsavven Road is a...
To get in there, we're going to have to ride, drive across the bike trail, right?
Sorry?
To get into that property, we're going to have to drive across the bike trail. Right?
At some place you are.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking.
Probably on Unsavven Road.
Okay.
Because you would come off of that to go into your property.
Yeah, you can see it connects to an already paved walkway on the St. Paul parking lot.
Let's say we built a school out there, you know? Let's say that happened. For the buses to get into it, they'd have to drive across the bike trail, right?
There'd be a bike, on Unsavven Road, which would be a developed road at that point, presumably.
At that point, for sure?
That'd be a part of the development agreement.
Right. That would be, that would be a developed road at that point, and there would be a bike trail crossing on what would be Unsavven Road, the actual road. Right now, it's just a driveway, right?
Probably similar to what you see.
Most of the people that go out there don't even realize it's a road. They just think it's their driveway. But, but obviously, as it's drawn on here in that light gray line, it's Unsavven Road. And if hypothetically, you developed a school out here, yes, the buses would come down Unsavven Road, there'd be a trail crossing on Unsavven Road that those buses would...
I mean, I understand that, but there would be a need to cross the bike trail.
Yes.
Which if kids are going on that to school is an issue when the buses are coming.
Yeah, similar to...
We just ran into this issue when we built the elementary school that we tried to fix.
It would be something you would have to, you would have to study. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, that is a concern that I've had as well, and I had this the last time, Mr. Hegedorn, that you, that you visited with us, that by granting an easement such as this, we are restricting the use of our own land. We have no idea how this land is going to be used. And you, nor we, know exactly what Unsavven Road's future is and what timeline that's going to be developed, whether CP Avenue comes down there. So I am really concerned about that, and I think we suggested finding a route for this bike path to the east, on the east end of our property. And I'm a little disappointed to see that that's been ignored.
Well, it hasn't been ignored, sir. We do have an exhibit.
Sir, I'm still speaking. And here we are, being with the plans firmly in place, a deadline for grants, and I feel a little jammed. And I'm not sure that, you know, that that's really operating in the best, in the best way when you're coming to ask for a favor. And I also have not heard, are you, is there a plan to pay for the easement?
I believe, you know, I'm not sure if that's, if that's covered in the grant or not, and if that'd be refundable. I think the expenses that the engineers, the work that the engineers did, cost of easement, are considered refundable expenditures as part of this grant. I do apologize for cutting you off, sir. We did prepare another exhibit with the back route trail. The planning committee at the church strongly encouraged us to share with you this proposed trail and urge you to consider this one rather than the back route. However, the Strand Associates did survey a spur off the Glacial Drumlin Trail adjacent to where there's already an existing spur, which would still come across Lake Mills Area School District property. And it would still connect onto Unsavven Road. It'd be a little shorter, a little bit less costly. There's just concern of safety and usability. There's concern that the students from Lakeside Lutheran would still run up and down Highway 89. They wouldn't go out of their way to go on a back route. However, I did print them out, and I have them here to share with you if you'd like to see them. And I meant to say, there is a May 1st deadline, but don't feel jammed because I've talked to the lady at the DNR. She said that she knows we're having this meeting today. Your approval is not necessary today. I'm asking is that you consider it, deliberate, and then decide next month when you guys gather. And that's okay with them. It's not going to harm our chances of being awarded this grant money.
So is there a reason why you can't use the existing Drumlin Trail?
You'd still have to cut across our land to get there.
Well, I'm not sure where our land is on this thing. So why couldn't it come off of here?
That's what Bob is asking.
And that's what Marty was referring to. After the feedback that we received from last year when we spoke, we did have the city survey or Strand Associates survey that back route as well, the east route. So we, we do have that as an option, and it can be done there. Our preferred option is the front route.
What's the rationale for the front route going next to 89?
Is that it serves not only the students of St. Paul's, but it, how about it serves the students of Lakeside, the soccer team, and the other teams that...
They could still come down the bike trail and take the back route.
They very well could.
I don't think the distance is much difference, is it? I mean, I run this a lot. It's not very big to hit 89 over here. Not too bad. So Lakeside would just come down here, run the trail, and catch it?
That would be, yeah, exactly.
You have printout to that one?
Here you go.
Yeah, I don't know what that...
Yeah.
See that?
That makes more sense. Talking about our property, Rick, this trail would be right on the back of what we currently have out there right now.
And according to what you said, Dean, there's no plans to put any roads out there anyway, so no roads would interfere with that at all.
Not at the present time. I mean, we went through that question when we asked with the elementary referendum. Because if you remember, we talked about an option of building out here. But our option of building here, we really needed a second entrance exit for emergency reasons, and there was no plan at the present time, which was one of the driving forces for keeping it where it is. Same cost, gentlemen, either one?
It's costly on the back route, but the church has committed the funds for the, you know, full cost of the front route, so.
So it's not a lot of difference in cost between one or the other. Got it.
Well, let's put that on the agenda for next month, and we can kick it around a little bit.
I mean, I'm going to say quite honestly, openly, right now, that my first option is not in any way to block our property on 89. That's my own opinion as a board member. I am open to discussing something back here, but you'd have to do a real lot to convince me to go the front road. Because I think it limits our access, and I think it limits our future potential to sell it if we ever wanted to do that or to use it. You'd always be walking over the bike trail.
I do have one question on the, on the backside option. Is there any reason why the trail's running on the north side of the Unsavven? Is there an option to run it on the south side?
We could ask the Strand Associates to look at that. I believe this is all the side of a hill here. So it'd take a significant amount of excavating. It's not that it couldn't happen.
Okay, I was just kind of curious what the...
There is definitely a level change. You can see some of the lines there. There's definitely a level change.
There's a huge dip out there. Okay.
My other question would be to find out if there, if anyone is willing to pay for the easement, no matter where it ends up being.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have that answer directly for you.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, I don't have that answer for you today.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll put that on for discussion and...
Got it.
Next week or next week? John, next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, the other item I have here today is about Lake Mills Area School District becoming a farm-to-school host site. And again, there is a few deadlines upcoming. I've had a few conversations with Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
And just gauging level of interest, and that's why I'm here right now. It seems like there's some interest. I have Liesel here. She is representing this program that I'm asking you guys to consider applying for today. She's got a few slides to share with you, just to give you a brief overview of what the program is and what it's done for Jefferson County and what it's doing. So I'm going to defer to her.
Thank you. So as Marty said, I'm a farm-to-school service member, serving greater Jefferson County for this school year. To give you a background of AmeriCorps in general, I think about 30 of us throughout the state, and there are different positions. I am a community outreach person, and then there's also nutrition educators. So those people could be together. So for example, I'm by myself, and I'm also just 900 hours is my service year. So do the math, it's just about 20 hours a week, more or less. But now at Springs here, it's been about 40 hours a week with getting some gardens in, so, but it's a good thing. So some sites have two people. Some sites, actually, like Reap and Madison, have, I think, four service members. So everybody's different of what is happening around the state. So again, we're all over the state, serving, doing some great things. So my host site has been, is Town and Country, RC&amp;D, based in Fort Atkinson, and Eat Here, Eat Well is one of their projects. So that's who my host site is for the school year. So we are connecting children and communities to their food. So just to give you a brief overview of what farm-to-school looks like, it's tastings of local foods, such as Try It Tasteings, Try It Tuesdays. In Cambridge tomorrow, they'll be sampling some fresh greens for their Try It Tuesday. Establishing school gardens. Farm-to-schools also could be chef-in-residence program. Farmer visits to schools and also field trips to farms. And also, a big component of this is school gardens, you know, horticulture programs, agricultural programs, getting children connected to their food source. So you ask, why a school garden? What are the benefits of getting children out into, into a garden? Obviously, it's at a school, so science, math, language arts, and history can all be just so greatly enhanced through this. Arts and music, culinary skills, economics can all be brought into a garden. And just the math, the counting, the science is endless. Just take it, do it, to take part of a writing journal for language arts. Environmental education is huge, obviously, getting in touch with the natural world to see what happens outside and in the elements, and just who all comes to a garden. The sensory-rich experiences, when you can actually get outside and use all your senses to feel the soil, to feel the sun, to taste great food, to smell fresh, you know, basil and dill right in front of you. Obviously, the physical and mental health aspects of being in a garden. I know if those of you who have gardens, use that as your mental and your physical outlet, right? After a good day at work, get out there in the garden. Lifelong healthy eating habits are established with children. And establish a work ethic. They're seeing, like I was, I've been in an elementary school in Whitewater the last few weeks, and we planted seeds a couple of weeks ago. And so now we're just seeing what that, you know, taking that time to plant those seeds and take good care of them, what the rewards are right now. They're so excited to have little sprouts coming up. Community building, again, it takes a village to take part of these gardens, from teachers and staff to parents and just general community members. And to give children and people and staff at that garden a sense of place, just to have a set time when you're going to school, to stop by and visit the garden or after school, to develop a relationship with that. And just for a chance for children and everybody at that school to just be, just take some time and just relax, take a deep breath, and just be. So using a garden as a tool to teach, to enrich, to promote all of these, and so much more. Then the who of a school garden? We've got the whys down, so now who needs to be involved? Obviously, it's at a school, so the students need to be first and foremost. How are we going to get them involved with the garden? Teachers and staff need to be on board. Administration, now, this doesn't mean that teachers need to be out there every day in the garden, or administration needs to be out there doing stuff, but they just need to be able to support it and give the okay on items. Food services need to get involved. If this garden becomes big enough, are they willing to, you know, process the tomatoes or the carrots? In Watertown, they had a heck of a garden just after one year, and they had many tomatoes to serve. They saved them for the, during the school year, they made sauce, but there's a great team effort going on in Watertown. The FFA, you know, how can they be, of course, tied into all of this? A huge component. Student health services, right? School district nurses, they want to see healthy children, right? So a great aspect of this. The building and grounds, of course, right? This is their property that they help take care of, so how's that going to impact them? And are they behind this? Parents need to come on board. And then there's all the community volunteers, and there's a great master gardeners group here in Jefferson County. You know, what resources can they bring to the table? And high school and university resources, we're close to, you know, UW-Madison and Whitewater. All the high schools just here in Lake Mills, you have two high schools a tap from, with all those resources. And then there's the community resources itself, with local businesses donating... And then there's the community resources itself, with local businesses donating materials and, um, just their knowledge and expertise. And the how of a school garden, right? It's four simple steps. Form a committee, dream big, start small, choose a site, make the garden child-friendly, and enjoy with a few steps along the way in between there. So it's, uh, it's been, it's a great process. So Farm-to-School empowers children and their families to make informed food choices while strengthening the local economy and contributing to vibrant communities. That's from the National Farm-to-School Network. Um, this is, yeah, just down the road here at Jefferson West. Uh, so I'll just give you a brief glimpse of what's happening right here already in greater Jefferson County. Um, some, uh, here's Purdy Elementary in Fort Atkinson. Last spring, just about a year ago at this time, uh, they had a chef-in-residence program, three weeks, very awesome program. And they've had other artist-in-residence programs before. They had a, um, an art teacher or art person in the, in the school for three weeks. And they also had environmental educators in their school for three weeks, um, and they brought in Chef Tyler from Black Sheep in Whitewater. And they went into all these field trips, um, and this was all from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, were a part of this experience. Um, so just a great immersion program. They also established a garden in their courtyard, and that garden is established, or is maintained, um, through their summer's program. Of course, the big question is with school gardens, right? What happens in the summer? Who's gonna take care of them? How are they gonna be maintained? How will they be utilized? Uh, Purdy, um, it's a summer school program. Uh, Fort Atkinson, another one, Berry Elementary. This garden is just getting underway. Uh, they started an after-school garden club about three weeks ago. They opened it up to third to fifth graders. They had twenty-five students sign up, and they had to stop. They had to cap it, because that was all they, that they could, they could handle with the amount of volunteers and staff that they had. Um, so just a great turnout. I've been there a couple of times to help out. Um, this is, they're putting up some ideas of what they would like their garden to look like. And tomorrow, they will start building their beds, and next week, bring in some soil and get planting after that. Jefferson West Elementary, this garden's been about three, four years, and it's expanded ever, ever since. Uh, this is led by two master gardeners and an after-school program. Uh, this has about thirty-five students, so the school day children are not involved in this garden, or that school day staff. It's only after-school, um, students. And this too is also, um, run with the summer program. And like I said, they've expanded the garden each year, which is because of the great success, and they have a nice space to do so, nice and, um, flat and sunny. They had a great harvest feast at end of October. Uh, families were, could come in, and they enjoyed some great foods made by, um, with the food from the garden. And they also did a little food, food critique, uh, so it's a great, a taste of all the foods. So they still tomato-eggplant dish was just one of the many items, um, so just a great opportunity here. Uh, the middle school up in Watertown, Riverside Middle School, um, this will just be their second year. They received a wonderful grant from the DPI, um, just a year and a half ago. And, um, this is Mr. Peter Watts, he's a seventh-grade science teacher. He is the leader of this garden. So his seventh-grade science students are involved in this garden. And so this is, and he's developed a summer class, How to Be a Local Vor, looking at all components of staying local. Visiting your farmer's markets, seeing what's accessible right into, in your own town. Uh, so they have sixteen four-by-twelve-foot raised beds, so pretty, pretty ambitious for the first year. And produce in the cafeteria, and like I said, eighty-five pounds of tomatoes, twenty-five pounds of carrots, and more. And so they were enjoying those carrots, um, broccoli, and these, uh, tomatoes. And when these middle schoolers knew that this was their produce on the, at the salad bar, they cleaned out the salad bar. When they knew this is ours, it's ours. And now the other schools in Watertown are jealous of this garden, that now, like, the peer pressure is on because they wanna have more gardens at the elementary schools. So it just keeps on growing and growing. And like I said, they have a very good, um, team effort, uh, with Joan Jaikle, who's the food service director up there. And she gets this food right back out into the lunch, into the cafeteria, um, and just a great win-win situation for everybody. So I encourage, that's a, a wonderful field trip for any of you to go visit, uh, Mr. Peter Watts. Uh, over in Cambridge, they have a Silverstone Learning Center, which is off-site of the schools. Uh, they visit a few times a year. Um, it's led by a PTO mom and the Health Coalition in Cambridge. Um, then also the High School Egg Program, and the Environmental Education Program also uses that land. Uh, but at the site, they do have a school garden and also a community garden there as well. And they are in the works right now to add a garden onsite at the elementary school. They're probably not gonna plant this year, but they're gonna get the beds, bring in some good compost, let that sit, uh, for the summer and the fall, and get that developed for, um, ready to go in the spring. Uh, they have a very good chef in the classroom visits, and it also helps that they have about four dads from, just from the third grade, third-grade class alone that are professional chefs, so you have to use your, your parent resources. So if you guys have any, you know, um, chefs in your school here, you gotta use them. Um, so he comes in, um, and all the classes are, again, are involved, and he's made butternut squash pancakes with butternut from the school garden. So of course, these students at first, like, oh, I don't like squash. What is that? It looks funny. It's smooth. It's hard. You know, but once they have it, um, once they've tried it, it's great. Uh, this is Link's Elementary in Whitewater. Um, we are, this is, I'm leading this project. Um, this is, I, I live in Whitewater, and I live about one block from the school, so I'm taking on this. This has been my big project for the last couple of months. And this is just about forty-eight hours old. This is Saturday. And, um, we built four raised beds. We had about twenty-five volunteers come. Just a great number of people with great talent, expertise, from building the beds to remove the sod, and, um, and on Wednesday morning, first thing, we'll have about six yards of soil brought in, and then we'll mix, we've got some other compost. And, um, peat moss coming in too, and we'll, um, have the students will come out and move the soil into those beds. And I, um, was over there today, this morning, and some of the classes came out during recess, and so they're excited to see this, and gave a little intro to what happened over the weekend, if they hadn't already been there on Saturday. Um, so they're very eager and excited to, um, to be a part of this. And we found lots of worms. You can see from that picture, uh, so that's a good sign that the soil is really good underneath here. And I think we could just leave one of these beds just open and leave it just for worm discovery, because of just all the excitement for the worm. So again, with, uh, why try to explain miracles to your kids when you can just have them plant a garden? So that gives a little synopsis of what AmeriCorps is doing, what I'm doing in greater Jefferson County. Uh, like I said, every site's different. Uh, there are great resources, um, DAT CAP. So DAT CAP is the farm-to-school, um, head here in Madison. Um, and they'd be great, more resources too. And they also have these, um, toolkits. Gut dirt, gut veggies, um, and then some toolkits for school nutrition programs, which really give you, uh, you know, a nice intro for, um, you know, implementing youth gardens in your community. So it's just a great opportunity for your school district, for your community, to, um, you know, get children connected to their food source, get them healthy, get them outside. You know, it's a great situation, and I know probably Mr. Sanders has learned of some of the funding for it, um, just how it all works as far as the matching of the host site, and then DAT CAP or, uh, farm-to-school, I think, too. Um, so it's a great deal. You know, you get a lot for your money, um, because the stipend isn't very much, and so basically, it's glorified volunteer work, so... So, yeah, and, and it's neat to see who, the range of who all of us are, from recent college graduates to all the way up to retired teachers, educators, and all of us in between, so, um, diff- different stages of, of, you know, careers and interest. So it's been a great, uh, uh, you know, great experience and opportunity for me, so I definitely encourage you.
What you, you need to understand is AmeriCorps does have some upstart grants that you can look to apply for. Those grants then go through the planning of what you might want, tries to bring all the people to the table. My, if I'm saying this right, I've had some conversations with some of the, a couple of the FFA alumni people. I know Dean is here. He's been involved in this as we go through, uh, looking for, if we were to use something, could somebody bring some equipment to help us with it, and that has been very well-received in town. So I guess what we're bringing it to you for is, this is an idea that I saw in Sacramento a year ago at the Green Convention, and I've thought of our piece of land up here by the athletic fields that sits empty and does nothing but be mowed every year. And all the time and effort we spend mowing on a piece of land that nobody uses. And I, I just thought that maybe it was an idea that we could look into, community gardens, school-to-work, school, farm-to-school, all of the acronyms, excuse my missing one of them up. But that I think it's an opportunity that we could give our students in our community. Uh, I did a lot of groundwork a year ago, looking at, you know, do we wanna let the, um, food bank use it? And then they could take the food and use it at the food bank, or would they wanna use it and sell the food at farmer's market and use the profits? Well, they don't have the, the base, um, volunteer base to do any of that type of thing. So that's when I found out about AmeriCorps, I met with these people, and that's why they're here. And I guess we're just, we're looking to say, and again, it can be an emotion next month, is that to give us the right to start, to look at the grant and to move forward and get some people together to, to see what the possibility could be in this area.
I think what I've learned, let me just add to my thing, um, what I've learned already from the Health Coalition here and the schools that are interested, uh, I think it'd just be a great whole community-wide effort. Uh, just in Whitewater, we've gotten W3 involved, working for Whitewater's Wellness. That's our Health Coalition. Uh, they provided the funding for the materials for the lumber and hardware. Um, the local lumberyard provided out those materials at cost. And then I spoke with the soil, um, company today, and they're donating the soil, because their daughter goes to school at the school, and they're providing all the soil and, and delivery too. So it's just a great community-wide effort that everybody's getting on board with this.
Lisa, is there a reason why you have raised platforms on all of these?
Some of them don't have very much space, so they can do that in that amount of space.
And also the soil quality, soil, soil quality going down, uh, may not be very good. Um, and also the benefits of raised beds, uh, the soil stays loose, because you don't have the compaction. They're more easier to maintain, because you don't have the weeds coming out from, um, underneath. Um, and hopefully, yeah, like the raised beds we built Saturday, we used, of course, untreated wood. There's, what I learned, you know, from the lumber, lumber owner, that there's a whole new technology with treated, treatment, but we still stayed with the untreated, so hopefully, we'll get six, seven years out of those. Uh, Watertown, with their grant, that they were able to receive, they were able to, um, use cedar, which will last a lot longer.
Just, uh, just wanna mention that, uh, I've had a lot of conversations, been an ongoing conversation for me, uh, for over a year, to get some local food procurement for our schools in town here, and, uh, discovering this program was, what this program was offering was essentially what I was trying to do myself, and it's really, it was really a relief to, to meet Liesel and, and find out what's been going on. DAT CAP has a graphic that I shared with some people that shows farm-to-school programs all over Jefferson County. Uh, the ve- this different, the neighboring districts who are either involved or planning on being involved in the upcoming school year. It's based on a survey they did. Lake Mills was one school district that, uh, didn't reply to the survey. I don't know, there was a miscommunication there, but just on that graphic, it looks like a, like everyone's active around us except us. I've had really positive conversations with, uh, county FFA, uh, local FFA, including Lakeside Lutheran, who, uh, are, um, interested in possibly applying for this grant collaboratively with you. As far as sharing space, sharing resources, getting both FFA advisors and programs involved in local food procurement and gardens, um, and whatever, and whatever you guys decide to do. So there's been discussions and, and conversations on both schools, and also the Rock Lake Activity Center and their after-school programming and their garden. They all kind of wanna coalesce together on this, if this were to happen. Uh, and I, this was supposed to be the public comment, but I have, uh, just, uh, a few letters of support from, uh...
Get him to the boss in the middle there.
Charlie Unce and, uh, Erica Nice from the Rock, Rock Lake Activity Center. Or, sorry, the, uh, he, he... The Lake Mills Health and Wellness Coalition.
Don, I know you have a question.
Yeah, I was involved in this, starting, when this project started, West Elementary.
Oh, okay, cool.
This was a great project. But I did notice one thing on when you showed the slides too. Most of these gardens are next to the school. They're, they're on the school property. If we were to do something where you're talking about, Dean, we'd have to transport kids from the elementary school up there, or we'd have to, maybe we could give some of that per, open playground there, the space there for a garden.
But I think that's what, in a grant thing, you look at, 'cause I think when we built that school, we kicked that around.
Yeah, I don't know if the middle school has a place for a little, you don't really need a lot of space. I mean, from what they found, and it kinda starts little, and then it kinda grows, and it's really, parents are heavily involved. And it's just, it's, it turned out great in Jefferson. I, that's only one I know of. But you can't be riding the bus from the elementary school up to the back of the high school.
Right. So that's what, at Cambridge, when they go to the Silverstone Learning Farm, um, they do, they only get out maybe two or three days a week. They'll have a planting day in mid-May, you know, late May or so.
And then they have a harvest.
Then they come back in the fall.
The real thing was that the kids used to go out and look at this thing every day, you know, to see how their plants were growing and...
So that's how, that's, that's the number one reason why they wanna get a school, a garden started on, at the elementary site.
So more maybe than even up here, unless it was the high school. And at one time, all that property up there was used by the FFA.
Yes.
But you'd have to have the garden by the school. You couldn't be transporting them from up there.
Well, and I think too, with the summer, you, if you've been by up there, all the soccer, the, the baseball, there are kids always up there. So that part of, that I heard was, kids wanna see it, they wanna be part of it, they're there. I mean, if you were by on Saturday morning, I can't imagine how many cars were sitting out there with the kids running all over for spring soccer. But that was, again, one of the ideas that drove me for that area, but, you know, we have the land right next to the elementary school, that we could do something. But that's what the grant is about, is to get people together to study it. And, and I guess we didn't wanna, I didn't wanna start out with anything if we hadn't come here and said, you know, you're interested, because if you're not interested, then it's, we're done, so...
Well, the community garden, I keep kinda watching that one too, to, 'cause we had this presentation before, over at the Rock Lake Activity Center. Are those community gardens, or are those children gardens, or... Or are they even active anymore? I mean, they kinda... Okay.
Come to the mic though, please. Thank you.
I see 'em sitting out there.
The after, I do work at the Rock Lake Activity Center. The after-school group does have that big section closest to the road.
Okay, that's one I see.
Mm-hmm. And then, uh, the other plots, they go for thirty bucks apiece.
To the community.
Yes. So really reasonable benefits the Activity Center a little bit. And then the Activity Center provides the water, which is the, it's a big deal. You gotta really think about a water source. That's one of the big things they've had there.
Do we have water? We, um, do we have water up there?
That would be... We do have that hydrant up there now. You have some water from there, so...
Yep, I've, I've grown my own tomatoes there the last two years, so...
So we'll, if you're all right, we'll move forward, and I'll bring back details, and we'll keep you up informed.
Just a reminder, the, um, the manager, the program manager of this particular farm-to-school... Yeah, Dominique Bradley, um, has said that she'd be willing, if you, if you requested more information about the finance, what, what it all entails, the finances, uh, she'd be willing to meet upon request. She just couldn't be here today for this school board meeting. Um, but the deadline for the grant is May eighth. And, uh, they'd be considering us as a host site in the state of Wisconsin.
But we did, what I, what I did do is send in a, you have to send in a preliminary letter saying you're interested, so that they would keep you on the list for the grant. I did that, just, if we weren't, all you had to do is say you're not interested, so... All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along.
EUA report, very quickly, as you had sent them to do a report on this building. We have had, um, engineers from all of the different trades through. They, we met with Mrs. Strike on Friday to do a usage, uh, room usage s- study, which is the same thing that we did when we did the elementary, and they should have a report to you by your meeting in June. Handbook, there are four things in the handbook that I'm gonna ask that we update. Three of them I had. One of them I didn't get till today about three o'clock, because our lawyer was doing WASB retreats or whatever, so he wasn't able to get it back to me, but, um, you can send them down to Patty, that would be fine. The first one on page forty-seven, section nine, there's a reference in this section to fifteen point oh, point oh-seven. It should be fifteen oh-six. It's a, it's a very simple change. The second one is, in our handbook, we always talked about hours and minutes, because that's what it said in the old, in the old handbooks, being that days are now gone, they need to be taken out of the handbook. Thirdly, in the... be taken out of the handbook. Thirdly, in the, when this handbook was written, it was always February 1 for a retirement letter. And we've kind of looked at April 1 because contracts are moved back to May. I guess I'd like to see that changed. All of the dates in there will have to be changed. That's, that's, you know, common sense. But the last one was, as we reviewed this, we were not sure that our post-employment benefits, section 901, which I think you have in front of you, there's some yellow and some blue on it, was exactly what it should say. You know, after all of the mess that we had at the beginning of last year and things. And so Mr. Butler took a look at this and he's, this is what he got to me at 3:00 today. So I apologize, I didn't get a chance to send it out. But he, you know, one says we need to change the date, but in one of the sections, section D, it states, "Teachers shall receive a yearly stipend equal to 26, or 20% of their annual salary in effect at the time of retirement for a period of three years." It does say that, but he said you probably want to say something that it also does have a constructive receipt tax issue if given to them that way. If you remember, that's where we got in trouble with the IRS to start with, because it wasn't a constructive receipt, or at least we didn't say it was. Then in F, G, F and G, there were some wording that's underlined that he changed and he took some out so that it is friendly with the IRS. And again, you haven't had a chance to read this, I'm not going to read it to you. But take a look at it, see what you think, let me know. The back two pages, which are double-sided, there's four pages, his thought on that is, that might be some language you want to look at if and when you change the post-retirement benefits and include all groups. So it's not something right now, it's not something for next month, but it would be something if there was a change. He suggests that we go to this. So I would ask that, maybe you want to look at that too in conjunction with your meeting on Wednesday night. So those are the changes I'm asking for this year, are the things that in the handbook have caused not any headaches, but need to be cleaned up. And like I said, I would read this one through and, and ask if there's any questions. Just let me know and we can work on that.
Did we put something in the last time? Remember, we, we keep going through this handbook every year and we
Well, we're supposed to.
Most of the time, we have these date changes.
Yeah.
Did, did we talk, didn't we talk about something in our computers that could just roll all the dates?
They can, but we still have to talk about it here.
Okay.
It still has to be on the record that you've done it. And I asked him that too, because you're right, but.
You know, it's just kind of a pain every day to get the dates.
Absolutely. And that's why I leave, that's why I have Patty, so she can do those kind of things.
So we, this handout you gave us tonight, we should probably just put in our post-retirement fund file. So when we do that.
Right. But the 901 you want to look at, because 901 is currently in the handbook.
Number D? Why can't we just put taxable there? Like, teachers shall receive a taxable yearly stipend.
Well, and that's what he's saying, is you don't have anything and you need to look at it. And then all of the other changes in F and G.
F and G, okay.
Next, I included in your packet a copy of the final strategic plan from the second phase. And Dr. Thomas said on that group, she can talk to that as we go. You adopted the first one, which changed the mission statement, looked at the vision. And what the second phase group took then was to say, how does that apply to you? What do we want to do for the next three to five years as a, as a district? And that's what you have. Basically, a four-tiered pyramid, as was explained to us. And we're looking to do something graphic on the webpage so that this pyramid does things that I can't make it do if it's approved. But to continue to look at inspiring teaching, learning and achievement, to nurture the whole child, embrace the village philosophy and serve as responsible stewards. And you can see in there, the things that I, I like about this is that these are drivers for when you're making decisions. You can look at these and say, oh, does that fit? Does it not fit? Now, this is what the community kind of said to us, they want us to look at. So I, I got it open for questions. If you would want this move forward to be voted on in May, we can do that. Donna, anything you want to add that, because you were there and?
Pretty well summarizes the work.
So can we move it forward to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If you're all right with that.
That's one of those things where you're never going to know how it's going to work till you try it.
Right.
Audit firms?
The next one I just, we, we discussed last month, audit firms. And I know there was concerns as to how we had done them in the past and how my, my question of where we were at in, in the change. I think you heard tonight that the audit firm is looking for more education on our end, but they do not provide that through this firm. So I was looking to find a firm that provided more education for our, for our school district, which I have found in a different one. I'm not going to move forward with that unless you tell me that if you want us to go to an RFP process, I can do that. And that's what we did the last time through. If not, I really would like to look at a change in the firm. I think one of the things that you heard tonight was there were some concerns, but not once did that audit firm pick the phone up and call me. I didn't receive any of those concerns until I got the booklet the same day you did. That concerns me. If I'm supposed to run the district and there are concerns, I need to know that. I, I guess that was frustrating for me as the person running the district. But I guess I'm asking for, do you want us to do an RFP? We'll, we'll get moving on that. If not, I'd like to look at a change in the audit firms and approve that at the next board meeting.
Hey, it was a pleasure. The board. Go ahead.
We, I, I
Do you want to do a proposal? Go ahead with the one we talked about.
I'm open either way. I, I'm just saying, we're not getting
What do you want?
What we should have.
What? Well, we had a, we, there was a, it's coming later on the agenda. There was a finance committee meeting. Okay.
You want to speak to it then, Donna?
When, do you want me, want me to wait till it comes on the agenda or speak to it now? What do you want?
Probably better if you spoke to it right now.
Okay. Well, is that okay with you?
Sure.
I mean, you're the person. We had a finance committee meeting, was it about a week ago, Bob? That we had this committee?
Two weeks.
Meeting?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
Two, maybe two weeks ago. Okay. Steve was unable to attend, he was ill. So it was Bob and I. And I should, I brought copies of the notes that I made from the meeting. I can just give you all a copy and, because when I went home, I wrote down notes. But one of the issues on this was about this audit firm. And kind of going to you, if anybody wants a copy of my notes, I brought them. But anyway, we went through the issues of the audit. And you know, Dean had brought this up to us at the last meeting. So this wasn't really anything new to us. And actually, after we talked about it more, I mean, you've already made a commitment to another firm for the membership audit, right? I mean, normally the people that were here tonight would have also done the membership audit. This district has always operated on hiring an audit firm through a request for proposals. But this kind of incident is pretty far along. Do you know what I mean? We're not just changing, we have issues, like Dean said. He didn't know anything about it. And actually, he brought in another audit firm when the audit was going on to help out because truthfully, it's true. This audit firm that we have now came to us through a request for, from proposals and the administration picked this firm and we approved it. But they don't do training that we seem to need right now. We need someone to provide education and training to our staff that are working, not only our business manager, but in the financial services area. And there are more people that help him out and they need training too. So what, now, this was just my recommendation after the story got told of all the issues and things that are good and the things that need improvement, both things, that right now, if they want to make a change, we should just make the change because we've kind of already made the change. We've already brought in this other firm. And now, not only have we brought them in to help this in the last audit, but we've also hired them to do the membership audit. So why would we now go out and have requests for proposals and start the process again?
Sounds good to me.
We're kind of in the middle of something.
I don't
So I don't, I, my recommendation is that we just go ahead and hire this other firm.
Census?
Yep.
And that's fine, that's fine with me.
So you want it as a motion next month then?
Yeah.
I mean, you should have it as
I think it's important that, that you have somebody that is, is helpful instead of just critical about things.
Well, you know, you know as well that there are some firms that their strength is to educate and to train. And there's other firms that their job is to just come in and do the audit.
Right.
They want you to have stuff ready. They don't want to be reconciling anything. They want it all ready to do.
They want to hit, hit the ground and run.
Right. And I think you'd have to know a little bit of the history of, there are, of when we first started hiring the current firm we have. It came at a time, to be real honest with you, I, I wasn't in this district, but I was in another district that hired them. They were the least expensive. We didn't have any money and they were the least expensive and they did, I mean, this lady made a good presentation. And, and they did a thorough job, you could see. But just, it's time maybe to change.
Well, in proximity, is they're located in La Crosse.
They are.
So if you want help, it's a, it's a half day just for them to get here.
Plus, if you aren't happy with them and, and our administration isn't, you are the people that have to work with them.
Okay.
Right. Well, let's bring it up next month.
All right. Lastly, is staffing. As we've looked at the budget and we've looked at numbers for the high school, I think I sent you a business department projections. As you know, right now, we have a 1.5 FTEs in the business department with the sign-up of kids. We really would like to, I would like to see that expanded to two full people. I know that the districts went back and forth, but as with the numbers that we have in this area, we really need to do that. And then, as you've had to do things all the way through with that seventh grade class at the 119 students, we could use a half-time teacher there to bring the core numbers down from 29 to 23. Budget can handle both. Again, it could be one-year contracts, depending on how numbers, I don't see that in the middle school because that, that class isn't going to get any smaller. But at the high school, it's more of as it goes. But if we, if, if you're all right with that, I'd like to get moving on staffing, because right now, we're still in the front end of getting the people who are out there. Couple of months from now, we're going to be in the middle of, you know, the competition with everybody else. So I think the, and the numbers basically say, you know, the, the two people in business here at the high school are important.
Will the .5 go to full-time?
At the, no, no. The .5 right now is technically an intern.
Is intern, okay. Well, we still need an intern?
No.
No? No intern. Okay. So we're looking for a full-time. And we better get going on that because that
There aren't a lot of them out there.
Oh, there's not.
We couldn't hire anybody last fall when we actually needed a .5.
We do have one right now, one of, one of our other interns who's looking for a full-time job. So.
Yeah, that's how we, we got hooked up with the interns. So
Right.
This is a hard-to-fill area.
And one of the three. So with that, I'm, I've, I think I've gotten everything. Other than anybody who saw that magazine, the Learning by Design, our building is in there. It is on the website. You can go to their website. And we got an outstanding award from the national, their nationally acclaimed awards presentation or whatever.
All right. Mr. Primmer, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
All right.
All right. So I apologize for not being here. Last month, I had a wrestling awards banquet to be at. So spring sports are now in session. Track, one highlight from that is Ben Dunkleberger participated at Nelson Daniels, which is a big invite. And he was a freshman of the, or athlete of the year, which was, I thought, a big deal because he's a freshman. Soccer, recently, they had a tournament last weekend, they tied Mayville and Beatpoint at Portage, 7 to 1. Golf, participated at the Elkhorn invite and Logan Larrabee medaled there. Also, baseball and softball are in session now. This Friday is the state forensics meet, which I know a lot of people are participating in. Between, recently, there was a solo ensemble music festival at Luther Prep and 66 students were involved with that. Also, April student rotarians are Richie Wilcock and Lizzie Burrow. In April, or not April, March, NHS also hosted a blood drive where there was a lot of participation. And last Friday, there was the Launchpad event, which I don't know if you guys heard about that. It's like a battle of the bands kind of thing. And there was a, a band from Lake Mills High School this side up. They participated in that. And I heard it was a lot of fun. I unfortunately couldn't make it. And next Wednesday, there's going to be a UW-Whitewater wheelchair basketball presentation. And May 4th coming up is a band and choir concert. Any questions or comments?
Good.
Lot going on.
Busy.
Thank you. Election results.
Election, sure. Election results, school board election results from April 7, 2015. There were two open seats. Donna Thomas had 1,019 votes and Rachel Ruggles-Davies had 883 votes.
Congratulations, Donna. Did you start in and he leaves you?
Yeah. All right, done?
Yep.
Now you can come up here.
Make me walk up there.
Yeah. Make sure you're awake.
I'm sorry.
All right. As you may or may not know, this is Mr. Topol's last school board meeting after two terms, six years of being on the, on the board. And he's been a great asset to the board, especially in the facilities, no, not the facility, the finance committee. And we're going to miss him a great deal. And sorry to see you go. And we have a plaque for you tonight, Steve Topol, in appreciation for your dedicated service to the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education, 2009 through 2015. So congratulations and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
One more? Thanks again, Steve.
Well, Steve, thank you very much for your time on the board. These last six years have gone by very quickly. You have been a, a great colleague and I'm going to miss you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or anything? All right. The WASP Day at the Capitol, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, we attended a, a day at the Capitol on March 18th. Mr. Sanders went, Mrs. Strike went. And we had, it was a full day. The first half of the day was kind of an in-service from WASP and how we approached the, our, our representatives and how to talk to them and, and how, what's going to happen during the day. In the afternoon, after, after lunch, we had it divided up into a couple of visits. One was to Senator Fitzgerald, and he was there. One was to Senator Fitzgerald, and he was there, actually. And he was very cordial, and he listened. I don't know if it went very far, but at least he listened to us and what our concern was. And basically, our concern is funding primarily. And the restoration of the categorical aids, the $150 per pupil. And the sad part, in a little commentary, if you look at our area school districts around here, all of them are being run more or less by referendum. And we heard today a very impassioned speech by the superintendent at Jefferson. And the referendum failed, and they're looking at some massive, massive cuts. And which means people and programs and who knows what. The other person we visited was Representative Clayfish, who wasn't there. And his worker guy talked to us and took notes. And he was a college student, and I don't know how far the notes went, but he at least took the notes down and hopefully passed it on to Assemblyman Clayfish. So it was an interesting day. And there were a lot of people from throughout Wisconsin that came down to talk to their representatives. So hopefully, that made some kind of difference. So with that, the finance committee. Dr. Thomas, do you have any more to add?
Yeah, no, well, I'm going to now pass out these. These are just notes from the meeting, plus the handouts that Mr. Chady provided. So just take one, and you can pass them down. These are, some of these things are things that are probably going to come to us next meeting, too. I mean, we started out, we got the report and went through the audit report. And I think you could see from looking at the report and from the lady tonight, we have a lot of strengths in our financial services in this district. And we also have some things we could get better at. So it's like every district, we just, it's kind of a balancing game. And then, we talked about the membership audit coming up. And I had told you before that already Baker Tilly has been hired to do that membership audit. And Bob told you they'll be here on 16th and 17th. Yeah, so there are the dates. And then, we talked about number three, which was our changing audit firms. I wrote some notes there. And then, if you go over to page three, Bob provided to me, and I think that'll, is that coming to us next week, the fee schedule?
Next month, yes.
Next month, I should say. Next month, the proposed fee schedule. And the things, I can mention more when we have it. But really, things are staying the same, other than they're just eliminating a couple fees that we thought are really in our electives, but actually, those courses are required. So based on a recommendation for the administration. I think lunches were going up about a nickel, weren't they, Bob? Nothing serious. And the last item we talked about was, at the meeting, was the food service. And I think that Mr. Sanders talked to us the last time that they're looking at going to a private for-profit company as opposed to our little nonprofit that we're trying to run here. And if you read the minutes, it talks about that. And Mr. Chady's kind of been put in charge of getting requests for proposals for that, and talking to other people, and going out and interviewing people that are using such services. And that was concluded the meeting.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Policy report, we have a number of policies there. The only comment I have, I have a couple comments, I guess. On the field trips, it's made clear in there that any field trips outside of the state or outside of the country have to be approved by the school board. And we made that pretty clear. The other field trips are administrative approved. If they're going to a fish farm rushing waters or something, that can be approved by the administration. But we're primarily, the board gets involved with field trips that are outside the state and outside the country. Or extended day trips, or field trips where they're staying overnight someplace.
And I think that it's important for you to know that in the policy that we were working off of, it doesn't, it didn't say that. It said that was the district administrators. My procedures have always been to bring them here. So we changed the policy to do what we procedurally do.
The other policy, library media, the librarians have had input into that, and they have written that policy. And we looked at that, and so has the guidance and counseling departments. So those are the first readings. And then, we'll get into the couple of policies that we've been working on, the action items.
When was the last time we had a request for reconsideration? Has it been a long time?
It has been a while.
Okay.
It has been, it was before my time.
Okay, well, that has been quite a while, then.
Yeah.
Correspondents, Mr. Topol.
I have two correspondents this month. I wish to thank all of those involved in honoring Dixie's memory with the donation to Rainbow Hospice. That was one of her true passions, and I'm sure she would be pleased with your donation. She was an active participant in the portfolio evaluation process, as well as scholarships. I miss her terribly. Ken Stetson. And dear Lake Mills School District, thank you for your generous gift of $40 to St. Thomas Aquinas in memory of Jacqueline Larre. We will notify her family of your gift from Bart Timmerman.
Okay, action items.
The first two you have are policy 830, use of school facilities, and the exhibit that goes with it, the fee structure. As you can see, we took into consideration many of the things that were brought up last month, changed some of the items. We did some work with the fee structure to try to make it a little easier to understand. We did have some conversations with, I had some with some of the youth coaches, with the head basketball coaches, who, you know, I guess their understanding was is that these are teams that are not part of the school. They're using lights, water, sewer, electricity. Paying a nominal fee is probably not out of the question. And I ran this by the head basketball coach, the boys' coach, and he said, I don't, you know, there's no question in my mind that this is being pretty fair. So we really tried to clean that up so that it didn't read like, if I use it 10 times, I pay $20 every time. It's if I use it 10 times, I pay $20 one time, and that type of thing. So again, it was a policy that was, it's time to be cleaned up. And that's what we've tried to do with it.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move the board approve policy 830, use of school facilities and grounds, and policy 830 exhibit, facility use fee schedule.
Second. Mr. Imperio?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve policy 830 and 830 exhibit. Discussion on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of a professional staff contract.
As you remember, the, our elementary music teacher is leaving the area, relocating with her family. So we were able to interview candidates for the K4 music position. And I'm recommending Christopher Shanafelt. And I think it's Shanafelt, I apologize for that. He just did a really nice job in his interviews, and I think will be a good addition to our music program.
Move the board approve a contract for Mr. Christopher Shanafelt as the elementary music teacher for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve contract, music teacher. Comments, questions? The boys will be excited down in elementary. And hopefully, the girls, too. But any other comments, questions? Roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of preliminary notice of non-renewal to a professional staff member.
We talked about this last month, being that we hired a guidance counselor for this year, but are now able to get a psychologist for our grades five through 12. We need to give a non-renewal then to the person who was the guidance counselor in that position. And, you know, it says in the letter, you have to do it this month, and then you send the final notice next month. But in there, it will say, it's not due to any job performance, it's due to budgetary or other circumstances. And she knows that this is coming, and so Michelle is, we've had a nice conversation, she and I, and Ms. Seabrood over this.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve pursuant to 118.22 Wisconsin statutes, a preliminary notice of non-renewal for Ms. Michelle Kozuski.
Kolchowski.
Kolchowski. For the 2015-16 school year, due to budgetary reasons and educational programming and curriculum changes.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the preliminary notice of non-renewal. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing done, roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of crossing guard resignation.
Due to poor health for congestive heart failure, I am resigning as a school crossing guard as of April 3, 2015. It's been a pleasure working for the school district. If you are happy with my wife working the rest of the way, she will let her know. Jerry's been at Mulberry in Fargo since I came. He's been a very, very dedicated employee there. And at this time, his health is failing. His wife is willing to be his sub for the rest of the year, and I'm willing to just, we'll just do that. And we may have to reevaluate this position and where it is in the future. But if you know Jerry, reach out to him and let him know how much you appreciate, because, again, his health is not good right now.
I move the board approve the resignation of Mr. Gerald Shoemaker as a crossing guard for the district, and thank him for his services to the students, parents, community, and the school district of Lake Mills.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the crossing guard resignation. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of custodial retirement.
You have a letter that says, I, William Miller, will be retiring on August 19th, 2015. It has been a pleasure to work and also a learning experience. Sincerely, William Miller. William is a second-shift janitor at the middle school. This will then, we will have two of them who have retired. I'm running a custodial meeting next week with the current people to see if any of them want to move into these positions so that when we hire, we have it hiring for the right timeframe. Willie's done a nice job, and like I said, he's been with the district for 15 years.
Move the board approve the retirement request of Mr. William Miller, effective August 19th, 2015, and thank him for his service to the students, school district, and community of Lake Mills.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve custodial retirement. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular contract.
We have one middle school assistant track and field coach, Kathy Rosecki. I know that Kathy has shown interest in the past, and she applied with Steve for this position.
I move the board approve a co-curricular contract to Ms. Kathy Rosecki as a middle school assistant track and field coach for the 2014-15 school year.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the co-curricular contract. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
Yep, three gifts to approve this month. The first one is to the Crystal Farms Refrigeration Distribution Company, who donated cheese and different snacks during the testing time, worth about $150. The second one was from the FFA alumni group, donated $1,100 to our local FFA chapter. And we had a $100 donation from Don and Rachel Primmer for our wrestling program.
I move the board approve the following gifts of $150 of cheese snacks to be used during high school testing from the Crystal Farms Refrigeration Distribution. A gift of $1,100 from the Lake Mills FFA alumni for the high school FFA program. And $100 from the Don and Rachel Primmer family for the high school wrestling program, and thank them for their generous donations.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the gifts. Any questions, comments? Thank yous?
Thank you. That's your mom and dad, huh?
Is that a relation?
Yeah, my dad.
Yeah, yeah? Good, good, thank you. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. May board agenda items.
I have the curriculum groups reports, we have policies, non-renewal, audit firms, strategic plans, staff contracts come out next meeting. I believe we do co-curricular contracts now under the same meeting. We do have a speech therapist that we'd like to recommend to you at the next meeting.
Right.
The bike trail, and then the Americor grant. That's what I have so far. I've forgotten anything, or-
Student fees.
Student fees, you're right, I forgot that.
Do a student activity account approval as well.
Anything else? Anybody you can think of?
All right.
All right, motion to adjourn to executive session.
I move adjournment to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, print 1, print C, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Two items, personnel, retirement discussions. Second item, discussion of four-year-old kindergarten.
Second. Yours.
You can have the last one.
All right, second. Second, Mr. Topol, second. And roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously.